Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks for visiting us. We were just in an executive session. We're going to, initially, though, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could add that we're in the executive session for some personnel-related matters and some litigation matters.
Would you like to do the roll call? Please.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. McCucci.
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Weed.
Here.
Mr. De Liberto.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
I believe we had some advanced requests for comment today.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
Forgive me, everybody. I'm a bit of a newbie. Mr. Klein couldn't join us today. We're going to initially approve the minutes from January 10th meeting. Motion to approve.
I approve.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Weed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We had some general public comment requests. There were two, if I recall. Yes. First speaker. Please state your name and area of residence for...
I'm Harry Atler. I live at 325 Edgemont Avenue in DeBarrow, Quakertown. I'm here to discuss the need for policy as regards students that are accused of, or in fact may be, a behavioral problem in this school district. I've recently been made aware of policy deficiency, I think, affecting special needs children as well as regular children, the student body in general. I'd like to explain that some students with special needs are defined as autistic. They're on a spectrum, an ASD spectrum. This disability manifests itself in social areas and needs or deficient in societal needs. For example, they may not be able to make eye contact with you. They may not be able to make friends. They may not be able to wear specific clothing. It's a huge spectrum, and very few people understand it. What they understand is they may have a cousin, their niece or uncle, that has this, but they're not familiar with the spectrum itself and the wide variety. It goes from astarers down to people that are non-verbal, and just about... ...guardian, which would contain all relevant information, the seriousness of the infraction, when and where it occurred, and possible ramifications. At the very least, I'm sure you can think of a few things to add to it. To summarize...
Please.
While the autistic student is by very definition a autism, identified as lacking social skills, they are already at a serious disadvantage when trying to interact with their peers appropriately. I don't know who gets to identify what is appropriate and inappropriate behavior.
Sir. Sir. Do you believe that you have come to a conclusion, please?
I have.
Thank you.
I'm about God, so...
I believe that's...
Mr. Atler, I... We've just, I mean, I apologize for saying it this way, but we've just witnessed a very long discussion. I try not to, I don't want to necessarily lengthen it again. No, I don't want to... But I am the board representative for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. I have a special needs child. I have two children with IEPs. I'm not going to go into specifics about that. But your comment is suggesting that a child with an IEP should be disciplined similar to any other child, or at least punishment should be meted out in a similar manner. Is that...
No.
Okay.
I'm saying right now, there is no, I was quote-unquote, as I told you what I was told, there is nothing sent home to the parent in this particular instance, and I was told it is school policy. Nothing was sent home to the parent identifying the fact, I have a child with IEP as well. So I'm very clear.
One of the problems that we deal with, and if you have a child with an IEP, you know that, the administration, but the administration's hands are tied in a number of ways. I'm not going to speak to it if you, this is not the forum for this. Janet Pallone is our Director of Pupil Services. NZO is our Director of Special Needs. I don't know if you've ever been through there, but...
This is not only for the special needs.
No, no, but...
No, no. This is also for the whole school body, because if the parent is not made aware of major infractions, attendant factors also child...
A lot of the policies that exist about discipline and that kind of things are legal-based, I'm just saying. So before, you know, this board is not in position certainly now to discuss that.
Is this board's policy?
It certainly does.
Working on that.
And I'm requesting that this board consider such a policy. That is what I'm here for. Are there any other questions?
Not for you directly. I'm just curious.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Victor.
I was under the impression that we do notify parents, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a timeframe that we intend to do that?
Well, I'll be more than happy to meet with you.
Yeah, okay.
I know, I know.
I was told point blank, we do not have that policy, which is my sole purpose for being here, sir.
Okay, okay. Like to meet with me?
Yes, I would.
Okay, I'll meet with you.
At this inspirational program. So what is Rachel's challenge? So first, let me tell you a little bit about who Rachel Joyce Scott is. She was the first person killed at the Columbine shooting in 1999. But this wasn't the end for her. This was the beginning of her truly inspirational story, for after her death was when so many friends, peers, and teachers reached out to her family to tell them just how much of a profound impact she made on their lives. She was someone who had always seemed to find the good in everyone. She somehow knew her life would be short, but understood in some way that it was for a greater good. When she was 13 years old, she traced her hands on the back of her dresser and wrote, "These are the hands of Rachel Joyce Scott, and someday will touch millions of people's hearts." She wrote school essays about human kindness and has quoted, "Compassion is the greatest form of love humans have to offer. Believe that we can do the impossible. Don't let your character change color with your environment. Find out who you are, and let it stay true to your color." She often expressed words of wisdom well beyond her years, almost as if she was a philosopher of humanity. Because of her vision, her family started this program to help her legacy live true. The vision started a chain reaction of kindness and compassion. The entire program is based on making schools safer, more connected, where bullying and violence are replaced with kindness and respect, and where learning and teaching are awakened to their fullest. Isn't this the ultimate goal for all of our children, to be able to be successful learners and be in an environment that their educational experience can be fully maximized without the obstacles of negativity or feeling distracted and alone, or the sense of hopelessness or feeling afraid? Did you know that 160,000 students skip school each day for the fear of being bullied? The number of mass school shootings in the U.S. were at a record high in 2018 with over 113 people that were killed or injured. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in teens, with 1 in 6 teens having seriously considered taking their lives, which was from a national study. These numbers should make you gasp. These numbers should make you afraid, because that means that we're all affected. You cannot be in someone else's mind and predict their thoughts or their feelings, and this is often very easily disguised. So why do we need Rachel's challenge to come to Quakertown? First, because we need to be proactive, not retroactive, once it's too late. But this program is not a trial. This program has proven that it does work statistically. It works so well, in fact, that there has been 150 suicides averted, reported directly from students themselves. There are pre and post surveys of almost 10,000 students across the U.S. that report 282% increase in students feeling safe at school after participating in the challenge, and an 84% drop in disciplinary actions across K through 12. There's statistically significant gains in community engagement, school climate, as well as a reduction in bullying behavior. So what makes this different, and why does it work so well? So Rachel's story is presented to students in detail, but aged appropriately, and hits them to their core. It is completely appealing to their emotional connection with experience, and impacts each of the students because they feel that connection to her story. This is not telling kids what not to do. It's not telling them they need to, you know, more rules, even though maybe they do, but it's telling them what they can do and how they can become powerful in their own actions and words. This goes much deeper than just bullying. It's about gaining connection to each other and helping them understand that they are not alone. It's reaching the unreachable, and it's giving them the power to want change. When this program was introduced to schools, faculty have stated that typically during assemblies of this nature, it's always a challenge to get kids to be quiet and listen, but it was completely different when Rachel's challenge was presented, in that the entire gym was silent and completely engaged in what they were saying. So how does this program really work? The program is developed in multiple steps, including presenters that are highly trained and certified annually. It's non-political, non-religious, nonprofit. The program works off of five key principles: awaken, assess, analyze, apply, and achieve. So they create an emotional connection with the community, identify strengths and opportunities, interpret the data, and create action plans, and focus on resources and training, and then measure and refine. This is a total team effort in multiple training sessions among staff, and then to carry out the program goals. There is also another supplemental program called the Chain Reaction, which is a one-day event that is filled with high-energy activities and interactions, positive change, physical and emotional connections, teaching and true stories, as well as sharing self-discovery. This addresses eight main areas: bullying and teasing, willingness to reach out for help, judging others, openness for expression, gossiping, valuing others, empathy, and hope. The fact is that there is already 1.5 million people involved in this program across the globe. I want to repeat that there's been 150 suicides prevented that we know of after participating in this program. So look around. If one life is saved, if it's your own child, then it's worth it. 90%, 97% of those who have participated in this program recommend it. 53% see a drop in disciplinary action reported from an elementary school. And over 1,000 students per year are involved. There were seven school shootings averted, according to the news and school reporting, because of Rachel's challenge. So I feel that the program in full, from K through 12, is needed to really allow for a solid foundation to be built and continued throughout our children's academic experience in Quakertown. This allows for the ability to fully maximize the benefits of the program in its entirety. Something drastic needs to change for an actual change to happen, and I believe that this is it. It isn't saying that current methods are not good, but statistics are showing that in general, things aren't changing and possibly getting worse. This isn't helping all of our children to be better students. This is helping them to be better people. This is providing a sustainable, evidence-based framework for positive climate and culture in our school. I saw something that I felt I needed to do, and because anything that I can do possibly to protect my children is worth the fight. For whatever the ultimate reason that I was driven here today to express my passion towards this mission, I at least know I needed to try. I hope that you all seriously consider adopting this program. The Penridge School District has already started this program and will be having their kickoff community event that's held on March 13th at 7:00 p.m., and it's open to the public, and I would encourage you to attend if you would like to understand more and see for yourself why it's so remarkable. I would like to close with a quote from Rachel Joyce Scott. "I have this theory that if one person can go out of their way to show compassion, then it will start a chain reaction of the same. People will never know how far a little kindness can go." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. I just want to let you know that we are familiar with Rachel's challenge, and one of our board members brought it to our attention, and a vast majority of us are very interested in it. It is something that has been on our radar, and I thank you for feeling compelled to come speak about it.
Thank you. I do have flyers, if anybody's interested. It just gives a description, a little bit about what it is. It has the website on there. It's very easy to search online. There's tons of video showing the effectiveness and the impact that it's made, so if anybody's interested, I can certainly leave that.
You're welcome to leave them at the table.
Thank you.
Yes. At this time, I am inclined to allow for additional public comment. Those, these future public comments, since you did not give advance notice, will be limited to three minutes or less. Would anybody else like to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Sandy Frisch. I am the advisor for Future Business Leaders of America at the high school, and I just wanted to thank QCEF for the mini-grant that we were awarded to help our students attend states this year. With me, I just wanted to introduce you to Nicole Chambers and Hannah LeBont, who are both part of FBLA, and they have benefited from the program. And they're also appear to be acknowledged for all of their other good works at the high school. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, but you do know QCEF is not part of the school district.
I know that. QCEF, some of you sit on the board for QCEF, and I just wanted to make a thank you and an acknowledgement to them for awarding us a mini-grant.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
That's great news, Ron. Would anybody else like to address the community? All right, moving on. Superintendent report, Dr. Harner. Three minutes or less. Go.
Not on your life, sir. Mr. Magnitsch is up first. He will be recognizing our High School Students of the Month, and you'll be hearing some great stories on each.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to first read what this stands for, because every month, we nominate Students of the Month, each grade, nine through 12. The four individuals that you're going to see tonight are going to be considered our Outstanding Student of the Months. So let me first tell you a little bit about the program and what we do. Quakertown Community High School, the Month Program aims to celebrate the individual achievements of identified students. We will highlight their contributions in promoting Quakertown Community High School culture of learning and academic success. We will elevate awareness of student contributions to Quakertown Community at large. A Quakertown Community High School teacher, administrator, or guidance counselor may nominate the students for such achievements in the following criteria: outstanding grades, marked improvement in grades... outstanding grades, marked improvement in grades, attendance, cooperation, leadership, overall curiosity, academic curiosity, I should say, outstanding attitude, disposition, and community involvement and service. So I am going to call up the four individuals that are here with us tonight. And we're going to do something a little different because these individuals were recognized by the Rotarian Club each month, and they're provided $100 scholarship that they can use for their schooling or anything that they feel fit. During that meeting and the dinner we host, I go through a couple paragraphs of all the great things that they've done. Today, what I like to do a little different. I like to bring them up. I'm going to introduce them, of course, tell you what month they were awarded. But then I'm going to give you little highlights of one at a time. And they're going to be up here, and you can guess, but they're going to give you a few minutes, and then they're going to step forward, and they're going to explain in more detail versus myself reading every great thing they've done so far. So that's how we're going to go through it tonight. So the first individual, September, Junior Nicole Chambers. If you could step up, please. For the month of October, we have Senior Alexandra Whalen. Stand up there, please. Up front and center. Our November Outstanding Student of the Month is not here. That's Senior Michaela Fuentes. She cannot be with us tonight. December, we have Senior Hannah Labanche. And then Junior, I'm sorry. January, we have Junior James Klein. You can face the audience, sure. Okay, so first individual here. This individual has completed five AP courses this year. She's, see, I'm giving it away. I'm giving it away. This individual has been accepted at three universities: Penn State, Drexel, and Pitt. But they hope to get acceptance within the next month from Notre Dame. That is their number-one choice. This individual is a president of our student council, a National Honor Society member, also teaches CCD classes, and is working towards her pilot license. Anybody? You want to turn around?
I want to say no in her mother.
It is me.
All right.
Related to you, Keith.
No, one of my neighbors.
So Hannah, if you could explain what you've done so far and what you plan to do beyond our school.
Yeah, sure. So I'm very involved in student council and school. I actually play a lot of the best, like homecoming talent show. I've had a lot of challenges up long time. Tonight's actually a talent show, so I was going to try to remember if that actually happens. And then, yeah, I definitely want to go to Notre Dame and see. Yeah, over the summer, I went to a two-week program at Notre Dame. I mean, I'd always like Notre Dame as a mom. Sure, and I definitely want to go there soon.
Great, thank you. The next individual earns straight A's, attends Upper Bucks County Community Technical School, is studying robotics, plans on attending Penn Tech, studying mechanical or electrical engineering, or possibly computer science. This individual is part of a wrestling team. Studies Jiu-Jitsu at the martial arts here in Quakertown for the last three years. So if that individual would stand forward. Thank you. Next individual does not procrastinate. And I think that's for all of them. Has been accepted at Penn State University, does field study with Mr. Hunziger. Had an injury last year and got into wanting to be a physical therapist. Is involved with Best Buddies, National Honor Society, and Mini-Thon. Captain of the volleyball. Will that individual step forward? Great, thank you. Who do we have last? This individual would like to attend Penn State University, majoring and wants to become a marketing research analyst. This past summer, spent some time at the Pennsylvania Free Enterprise Summer Camp. Is involved with the FBLA, the Key Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and also the Rotary Club. This individual takes currently two AP courses and was involved on, and a part of, the tennis team. Will that individual step forward?
Martin, I have a cold, so I'm trying to get over that. My voice is a little weird. No, the summer, or the school year was my first year on the tennis team. I attended PFW over the summer, which going into it, I wasn't really, it was, it's like a business camp. I wasn't really sold on business yet as what I want to do as a career. But I went to that camp and met a bunch of the nation's people. Like you also said, Penn State had been my dream school. So hopefully next year, I get into there. My dad is on the Quakertown Rotary. I was little, always helped me on my community. I love to help whoever I can, if I can.
Thank you. Could I have a round of applause for these great students?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, you're up next. Adria, come on up. If you recall, for those that receive our emails about wonderful news about our students and all their great successes here in Quakertown Community School District, it's indeed a privilege to be able to talk about this young lady because she has been recognized. She was initially one of four of our seniors, the largest amount of students who have been identified as semifinalists, national merit semifinalists in the country. One of four, the largest group for Quakertown. So that speaks volumes about the quality of instruction and the high achievement that's taking place at the high school right now, and all the preparation that goes on in the middle school and elementary school. But this young lady and her classmate, Michaela Fuentes, who I believe she's out on a trip right now. You know where she's at? But she couldn't, I knew she couldn't make it. There were two of them who made it on to the final rounds, and they are national merit finalists. So I'm going to read a couple notes here to kind of give you an idea of the scope of that. With more than 1.6 million entrants, Adria and Michaela are one of 15,000 finalists. About half the finalists be awarded national merit scholarships worth more than $31 million this spring. Their academic accomplishments represent the top 0.5% of Pennsylvania seniors. 0.5%, pretty darn incredible. Yes. Each student aced the ACT exam, scoring 35 out of the 36 points on the ACT, both of our two finalists. And on the SAT, to kind of give you an idea when they, I'm sure almost everyone in the audience at one point in their life took the SAT. They, she scored 1560? Or did you take it again, you got a 1600?
I took it one time.
Took it one time? That's really good news. And Michaela had a 1510 out of 1600. Both scholars await the selection of the some 7,500 merit scholarship winners from the group of the more than 15,000 finalists. So it's going to be exciting to see what's going on here. Also, since Jason and Mr. Magnitsch are one of our assistant principals at the high school, had a guessing game. What sport, what sport do you think that she is ranked number sixth in Pennsylvania? Wow. Okay, I'm showing hands. Since you have a West Point sweatshirt on, go figure in the audience, and board's got a, say again?
Track and field, so I'm not a track.
Okay, we're track and field. Okay, we're looking for what sport? Oh, come on, you know the story.
No, I know. I know track. I know shot putter.
So how far, you set your PR'd at the state championship at Penn State last weekend? Last weekend, she's PR'd there, and how far did you throw it?
41 feet and 11 inches.
Wow. And how many pounds is that?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight or nine, I don't know.
Eight or nine pounds. Well, congratulations to you and to your classmate.
That's great, thank you.
Now, I'm sorry Mr. Anderson could not join us tonight because he really would enjoy this next topic. And I'm sure the board members will understand it. It's maybe some of you in the audience. But it's the PA Civics Assessment Talk for the 1819 school year. A little context for those in the audience, since we have a lot of parents and maybe grandparents here today supporting your children, is that the governor will sign the PA Civics requirement in the law last summer. And the exam is that typically, the questions on this exam are typical U.S. naturalization citizenship tests that our students have, that those who come and immigrate into our country have to take. Tonight, we're recognizing those who had the great scores. Overall, it's a kind of little drum roll here. 85% of our eighth-grade students passed the assessment. See, you can tell this is a topic with the board because they're saying, wow. 85% passed the assessment. 20% of our eighth graders scored at least a 90% on the assessment. And this is just the first year. This is pretty, the gangbuster stuff. The average score was 77%. 13 students scored perfectly, perfectly on the exam. 30 questions on the exam, 30 correct answers. And we're going to recognize those students tonight. And Chad's going to help me here, Mr. Evans is going to help me. So we'll, one at a time, you come on up and I'll stand here until we're finished. Whitney Davis, please come on up. Hey, we can clap if these persons, this is Caitlin Durstein. Sidney Fromhizer, not here. Sophia Kincaid. Nina Lennington. Jordan Pearson. Michael Ricino. Amoria Rendal, not here, okay. Amanda Smith. Luke Summers. Honal Thomas. Darby Vale. And Rachel Valas. I love your choice of sweater tonight, thank you very much. My alma mater, thank you. In addition to honoring our students who earned a perfect score, I'd like to thank our social studies teachers in throughout the district because this is a combined effort. They get a little bit of the civics piece every year. This year, obviously, since it's state law, it gets a lot of emphasis. I think in the audience, we have at least one of those teachers. Chris Gorlets, would you please stand up? I won't get you to come up. Chris, I see you can't hide. It's truly an incredible feat that you have here. I wish another board member was here tonight. He was, couldn't make it because this is his big project that he wanted to make sure that we got this and got this right. So congratulations on behalf of the school board, all your teachers. You guys are rock stars, thank you. The final thing, item of recognition is the Tech Excellent Award. Tonight, we have an award to share with the board in our community, the District Administration's School of Tech Excellent National Recognition Program. It recognizes schools that have implemented innovative, effective, replicable technology programs that contribute meaningfully to students or the operational success of a school district. We are pleased to share that this year, Quakertown was recognized for our continued work around cybersecurity and data privacy. That's really a big one out there right now, and always will be. Quakertown is one of 54 districts across the country who earned this recognition. Joe Cuzzo represents a great tech team for the last five years. He's been our tech director, and hats off to his team. We have a plaque that we had mounted back in the district office hallway. And I just, Joe, thank you very much for your service, your contribution, and being one, when there's about 14,000 school districts across the country, and we're one of 54 recognized nationally for cybersecurity. That's great stuff, thank you. Sir, that completes my report.
Okay.
What do we have? Oh, excuse me, excuse me, let me get back into my.
No problem. No take backs.
Okay. Ms. Edwards has the report for the community and for you all on Safe to Say. Thank you.
Thought it would be helpful for you to have a little update on the Safe to Say tip line program. As you may remember, is this not on? No, it's not on. Okay. Safe to Say is part of Act 44, the school safety legislation that passed last year. And the Safe to Say program provides a tip line at the state level that students, or really anyone, can submit an anonymous tip about a wide variety of subjects. The tips are then triaged at the state level and referred to the school district and the local police for action and reporting. To give you an idea of the things that had to occur to get this implemented, not just in Quakertown. in Quakertown, but in every school district in Pennsylvania, districts had to register, create a three-to-five person team. Our team at Quakertown is me, Dr. Hoffman, Mrs. Pallone, Mr. Finerty for all of the buildings except Strayer, and Dr. Bubser for Strayer, and then Dr. Harner is our fifth member. We all had to attend a half-day of training, the portal and all the system had to be set up. The districts were given the responsibility of being the liaison with local law enforcement to make sure that we were on the same page in how we were processing tips. All staff members had to be trained, and we did that on a day when it was, we did a two-hour delay for cold, and we asked our staff members to come in one hour late instead of two hours late so that they could have this mandatory training. We had to train every student in grade six through twelve and do a variety of parent and community awareness pieces. The ongoing responsibilities are the responding to tips, which are twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, investigating each tip, and then reporting its disposition. Then we also need to put things in place to make sure that new staff members and new students each year are trained. So, this is what has happened in the first six weeks of implementation, most of it since February fifteenth. All but three of these tips occurred February fifteenth and forward, which is when we trained many of our students. The vast majority so far have come from Strayer. Fifty-three of them have been investigated and closed. Ten have been categorized as life safety tips, although as I'll explain in a few minutes, I'm not sure that the triage system at the state is necessarily triaging tips to be life safety tips accurately. So, that's what we have experienced so far. As might be, maybe not surprising, but the largest number of tips have to do with bullying, cutting, or self-harm, depression, or anxiety, or suicidal thoughts, or ideation. So, those are the largest category of tips within a few that are in other categories. There is, those of us who have been responding to these fifty-eight tips, I wanted to make sure that I hit on the good news because it has been a very overwhelming process. Good news, most, the vast majority of tips have been students reaching out for help for a student, a friend, someone that they're worried about, okay? Our students really care about their fellow students, and that has been really clear from the vast majority of the tips that have come in, and that's a wonderful thing. The other real positive is that as we follow up on these tips, while we have to reinvestigate them and go through the process, almost all of them are students who are already connected to help. Our guidance counselors are already aware that they're struggling with an issue. They already have various supports in place for those students. So, that tells us that our existing systems are working pretty well because the vast majority of these students are already being seen as needed, they're connected to the resources and support they need. All that's good. Some of the concerns, there have been a few that are either hoaxes or that were clearly designed to get someone in trouble. I'll give you an example, a couple of teachers encouraged some students to move along at dismissal and get to their bus on time. The students behaved extremely inappropriately in their language and all of that, and the students later submitted a tip, an anonymous tip, but you know, sometimes it's not hard to figure out where it came from, that the teachers had harassed them. Okay, so, we have very few tips like that, but there have been a few that clearly are either a hoax or that were submitted for the purpose of trying to get somebody in trouble for something. Another concern, as I mentioned earlier, is this twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five piece, because schools are not set up with second and third shift personnel. So, those of us on the team get a text, an email, and for life safety tips, a phone call each time a tip is submitted. The tips come in, the ones that aren't life safety, those come in twenty-four hours a day. The non-life safety tips are all reported to you at six o'clock in the morning, seven days a week. So, it really, school systems are not set up in order to be able to do that work effectively. And on the agenda tonight is a service agreement with the IU who has offered to put together a call center that would cover the six PM to six AM portion and do that for a number of districts in the county. There's also the question of, in the summer, guidance staff, for example, they don't work in the summer. So, as tips continue to come in over the summer, I'm not sure how we're going to meet the expectation of investigating and resolving those tips because the students aren't here, and the professionals that we rely on to help assess and work through the issues the student may be having are not here. So, I don't know exactly how that's going to work out yet. Over all the triage people at the state level, the Attorney General's Office set up an office that does the initial triaging of the tips. I think they are also learning because some things that are characterized as life safety have not really had any urgency to them. Like, if a student did something back in November and the tip is coming in in January, it doesn't suggest that there's an urgency to the situation. So, hopefully, as they continue to learn and work through this process, they'll get a little more skilled at making those decisions. The other concern is that while the people doing the triage have minimal training, they are not trained crisis counselors or mental health counselors, and so where you do have a student calling and saying, "I'm going to commit suicide right now," the system is designed to collect the tip and refer it, not to provide the support that that person might need on the phone in that moment. So, hopefully, those are some other things that will get looked at as we move along. And the other has to do with the unfunded mandate nature of Safe to Say. Surely, it's passed with the best of intentions, and you know, many of us that work with children and school systems every day are like, if it saves a child, we're more than willing to do what's necessary. However, over fifty hours of staff time went into the implementation pieces. Over five hundred hours of staff time was spent on the training. The, since, yeah, February eleventh, I think, was our first training day. The tip response, just managing the data in the portal, because you have to go in and then report the disposition, and you have to check with the police and report their disposition, and there's a lot of follow-up, is probably at least twenty minutes a tip. And then our administrators and guidance counselors, at Strayer in particular, after February fifteenth, literally did nothing else in the week following that except respond to and investigate tips that came in because of the volume. So, if you use kind of an average cost per hour for our professional staff generally, although there is not a lot of direct cost for Safe to Say, seventy-one thousand dollars roughly in staff time has gone into that. And that is all time that administrators aren't doing their other duties, that guidance counselors aren't able to do the more proactive things that they normally do on a daily basis. So, it is significant, and we hope that we will see the predicted falloff in the number of tips being reported as students become more familiar with the system and kind of the initial excitement fades a little bit. There are a lot of resources online, that's a publicly facing website, so there's plenty of resources, training material, parent awareness materials that are available on the website. And you know, we met all of our implementation steps, we are doing our level best to respond appropriately to every tip that comes in and take care of our kids. But it has been a lot, and I would want to recognize especially our building-level administrators and guidance counselors for the amount of time and effort and dedication that they have put into connecting with each and every child that we've gotten a tip about. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, thank you for the presentation. So, I was looking back on the statistics, and it looks like you have them nicely broken out. My question is, you break it out by buildings, and if you're seeing trends, is there any future that we would take this data that we're collecting and sort of implement a program or something around it to see year over year if, you know, I'm just thinking Rachel's challenge, for example, would be something that came to mind, but to see if we can decrease these...
Yes, I think that is absolutely...
Thinking that, I mean, you know, you don't want it to kind of fade off into the sunset. You want to keep the fire burning for them, but I'm just thinking, I agree with you, you know, that the novelty will wear off, and then you'll get sort of the meat and potatoes of what it's set up for, but...
Yes, and I think this data certainly will provide avenues for us to say, boy, we've had a lot of complaints around this, what are our proactive programs we have in place around this topic, and how can we improve that? So, I think that is definitely, it can be helpful to us in that way.
What do you contribute, the large Strayer?
Um...
Or, I mean, anything?
Probably age appropriate.
I think, yes, yeah, I was going to say something like that. I think that middle school students at their level of development responded to the training a little bit differently than maybe high school students, because the high school has had some tips, but not anywhere near the volume of Strayer. And so, I think that just the developmental age of the students and the kinds of issues that middle school students perhaps engage in more often than high school students has led to more tips from there.
Were they all, like, do you feel that, you know, of the, so on that point, though, I think my question is, percentage-wise, like, oh yeah, twenty-five percent of them all were important, like, you know, across the board, you know, like, you'd say, I mean, there's a lot more at Strayer, obviously, more so than the other three put together. I guess, you know, if you break it down by a percentage of what's important, it was, well, twenty-five percent of the seventy-two percent was important, and twenty-five percent of the other twenty-five percent was important, so...
If you're talking about, like, urgent and important, like, something happening in the moment that immediate response could make a difference, we have only had one tip that I would put in that category, and it was a high school, regarding a high school student, not a middle school student. Most of them are along the lines of, I'm worried because I know my friend is, you know, has been sad, or has been cutting, or is really upset because, you know, there was a relationship issue, or like, it's that kind of, a student worried about another student and how they're feeling. And so, was there an immediacy to that? You know, no. Normally, guidance counselors were already familiar, you know, with the issue or with the student, but it certainly didn't hurt to have the counselor check in with the student again, you know, and say, this, you know, it was reported, and checking in and making sure they're okay. And one thing I didn't mention is that I talked about the, how it's been, you know, for us and everything, that does not count everything that our police have been doing. So, our law enforcement, police departments have also been a little bit overwhelmed because in off-hours, when they need to do a welfare check, we don't have someone to send to do a welfare check, you know, on a student, it's not really our role, and so the police have been doing a lot of welfare checks, like, on the weekends, or Friday night seemed to be a popular time to submit tips.
Got it.
So, there's a lot of follow-up on their end that they're doing as well to check on students.
What's been like the reaction and feedback of the students that had someone else call for them, from the student's perspective and also the parents?
That's been a little bit mixed, mostly from the parent's standpoint. Parents have been understanding about why we talked to their student about whatever it was. In a few cases, parents were really upset, especially if there's a hoax tip where their child has been accused of something or connected to something that they're not involved in, the parents have been very upset that we've intervened, you know, to ask the questions. But, you know, for the most part, I think people are sort of getting a feel for it. I don't know, it's hard to assess the student response, I don't know if they expected to have everything followed up on quite as diligently as it is. So, if I submitted a tip about my friend, and then the next day, the guidance counselor is calling my friend down and is calling the friend's mom and doing, you know, so we'll have to see whether kids start to make different decisions about what they report. And I would say the one true life safety tip should have gone to nine-one-one and not Safe to Say, and that's another ongoing concern. If you have someone that is in a medically compromised state and, you know, they need nine-one-one, they need Keith and a helicopter, they, you know, they, they call the tip line, and then it gets triaged, and then they call, and then they get, you know, like that, it took a lot more time to get help to that student because they called the tip line and didn't just call nine-one-one.
Is there like state feedback on a monthly basis from the districts participating?
We have not actually been offered an opportunity to provide additional feedback yet, I'm kind of assuming that will happen as we get into this a couple months, and I've been keeping a list so that we're ready to provide that feedback when they're ready to hear it.
Mr. President, as you talked about Rachel's challenge and the really incredible presentation by Ms. Rickert about Rachel's challenge, understand for the board and for those who are still in the audience, there is so much going on right now in our district. We have the Positive Behavioral Support Program in each one of our schools, and in fact, this past week, we had, I don't know if it was, Adam, was it announced or unannounced?
It was announced.
It was an announced visit from the State Department to Trumbowersville to see how our implementation of that program is, and this, Trumbowersville was our first inspected school out of all the schools that have, everyone has to be inspected, and they got a hundred percent. So, that was, there's, that's been going on. We had several calls in here, tips coming in on cutting. Well, we've known, because of the awesome relationships our counselors and teachers have with individual students, we know a lot of that stuff's going on. Part of that, like, two or three years ago, four years ago, I remember a middle school counselor talking to me as I'm walking back in the hallway and telling me the scope of cutting, and I had no understanding of that. So, Janet put together a program, we had already implemented and the board had approved a behavioral health specialist expert that works and has a full dance card every day at the high school. We put a program in into the middle school, so we have a lot of the support systems, but I, so the relationships, PBIS, we have a lot of ongoing things. The last thing I wanted to talk about was cost. When we were presented this by the state and the Safe to Say people from, from the Attorney General's Office and the organization that they've hired, we were expected, with our school district size, we were predicted to have about three-hundred-and-twenty tips a year. If we've been doing this for three weeks, we know we've got that early spurt from kids saying, wow, I got this app and I can do that, but the cost is seventy-five thousand dollars so far of our manpower. I expect it to be a quarter million to a half a million dollars of new costs to a program on top of what we already know, because most of it, we already knew. But that just kind of gives you an idea, the, Dr. Bubser's here, and Kim Finerty and Greg Lesher down there at Strayer, they spent the whole first week investigating, the whole first week of this program. So, it's labor-intensive without any resources from the state to pay for it. So, I'd just like you to be sensitive to that. Thank you.
But we must participate.
But it's required by law.
Okay, thank you.
So, I appreciate that you're tracking the time and everything, that's great, yeah. To your point, if we do hit three-twenty at the current rate, it's, yeah, it's like half a mil. That's significant. So, hopefully, it'll drop off, or hopefully, we learn to adjust our response, too. So, hopefully, it'll drop off, or hopefully, we learn to adjust our response, too. Yeah, it's implemented. You know, we're just getting better at responding to the few that we should care about. You know, who knows? But it's, it's pretty rough to absorb that kind of a budget number.
So, but for the record, we did not hire anybody?
Not yet.
But we have, on the, on the agenda is a contract with the IU, so they answer those during the daytime calls, and they, and they do the triage on it instead of giving it off to somebody else, and that's, and we'll get to that during the rest of the board meeting.
Are we concluding? Anybody, any other board members have any comments on Safe to Say? Okay, sir?
Budget update was just a placeholder, the Finance Committee received an update on the budget, and those documents are included in, if we have further questions during the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Dr. Harner. Student representative, motion approved. Megan, thanks for joining us tonight. I'm sure you waited a very long time to speak with us.
Thank you.
We're prepared to hear your report now, if you'd be so kind.
Good evening. My name is Megan Jackson. I'm a senior at the high school, as well as I attend the Tech School for baking and pastry arts, and I've been there since my freshman year. At the high school, I am a part of the National Honor Society, and have had distinguished honor roll and honor roll multiple times. At the Tech School, I am part of the National Technical Honor Society, president of Skills USA, which is a student government for the, for the Tech School, and I've received first honors and acknowledged for outstanding Level One and Level Two student in my program. On top of all that, I was acknowledged as a February Student of the Month for the Tech School as well. And for the extracurricular activities, I am a member of the marching band and the indoor drum line. When I graduate high school, I plan to go on and study education, English, and possibly in due ESL. Going on at the high school, on February 2nd, we had a national, had a winter dance for National Honor Society, and part of the proceeds are going to a charitable cause. And February 14th, the wrestling team secured the league champions for the third year in a row, and Cory Kope, who is a senior, earned his 100th win. And then, on February 15th, the students at the high school were educated about the Safe to Say something hotline and app. And happening tonight is a talent show, and the money is going to Quaker Town Cares. March 1st, which is tomorrow, is the Mini-Thon Coed Dodgeball Tournament to raise money for childhood cancer research. And then, the two jazz bands that the high school has are going around and performing. They have been doing really well in receiving different awards for sections and as the jazz bands as a whole. The indoor color guard has had a few competitions and has ranked very high in like, the top two or three. And indoor drum line has had their first competition and got eighth out of 11. The musical is going on this year, and they're doing Fiddler on the Roof, and auditions were happening this week. And then, at the Tech School, Skills USA competitions were supposed to happen in January, but due to snow and cancellations, they were rescheduled and took place throughout the whole month of February at different tech schools, and they were just finished yesterday. And next week, the Tech School will be announcing who all has placed during districts. And on February 11th, 46 students were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society, and out of those 46 students, 21 of them were from Quaker Town. And this week was also FFA Week, or Future Farmers of America Week, and Animal Tech planned different spirit days to promote and support the organization, and the winning class who participated the most in those spirit days will be receiving an ice cream party. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some questions for our student representative?
Yes, I think we have to talk about yourself. You talked about a lot of the activities. Talk about why you love being a tech, is the things you talked about at the, when you were awarded being Student of the Month out there.
I enjoy doing, doing all the hands-on experience and making a lot of the products. My favorite products to make would be donuts and bagels, and we've been focusing on donuts a lot this week, so.
Can you bring some donuts to the next time you're a student rep? If you're here again, that would be great.
I did get the trial of donut. My daughter brought one home. Phenomenal. Great job.
Thank you.
Well, one of the special things about this young lady also is that she's, last year, I was going through my phone here to see if I quickly find the picture that I took of her at Skills USA competition, in the regional competition up in Allentown last year, because I know I took it, and she wasn't allowed to look at me. I was right on the sidelines there, and she's making this high cake, and putting icing on it and all that, and, but because she did really well last year, you would think she would even do better this year, but she gave up her seat, correct?
Yeah, I decided to give it to someone else because I got more of an experience from being thrown in there and not getting enough, a lot of time to participate and like, get ready for it. So, I decided to let someone else get that experience this year.
So, I thought, just thought of her selflessness was really special.
That is really special.
My one question is, who's your favorite uncle?
Um, which side of the family are you asking?
It took me a second.
Can I ask you one more question? When do you guys make chocolate eclairs?
Chocolate eclairs? We usually don't do eclairs, we usually do cream puffs instead, because we, when we do our Nocti test, they require us usually to do cream puffs more often than they do the eclairs. So, and piping the cream puffs are easier than piping the eclairs, so.
Trying to talk to my daughter, and she ended up bringing one home for me. Do you use the fancy name for the base of the?
The potashoe? Potashoe is this paste-type thing, and without of potashoe, you can create cream puffs, eclairs, and a few other desserts. So, it's just a base, and then out of it, you can make.
Lots of butter, right? I would guess.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are welcome to retreat at any time you feel fit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Moving on to stand-in committee reports. Ms. Weed, Policy Committee.
Most exciting committee, as usual. Of course, we did have a meeting tonight. There are several policies that are being updated. And Nancy Anne, I understand I don't need to read this long one, I can just say.
They are all posted in Board Docs for anyone to open them up and look at them.
Yes, I don't want to bore everyone by reading these. Some of them are quite lengthy. Policy number 918 has been updated and revised, and really, the only change there was to make a word change from involvement to engagement. That policy is the Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy, if anyone is so inclined to look at it. We are retiring several policies tonight. Policy number 315, which is disqualification by reason of health, is being retired because it is no longer needed. And then, similar policy, which just for support staff and administrative staff, is policy 515, and that is also being retired. I don't have the new wording for the complaint policy. Do you have that, Nancy Anne? Remember, we shortened it?
Yeah, that's, that's another one where we took three into one.
Yeah, we took three policies, policy 326, 426, and 526, and made it into one policy, number 1026. And this is a policy on making a complaint if you're an employee and bringing it to the board.
I found it.
Do you have the wording?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, why don't you read it? Because I don't have it on my computer. We shortened this quite a bit.
Yep. The board wishes to provide a process to resolve employee complaints if the employee is dissatisfied with the decisions made through the normal chain of command. And then, under authority, the board desires to provide for the resolution of concerns and differences that might arise. The individual may request and have the opportunity to present his or her concerns directly to the board, which may appoint a committee or meet as a committee of the whole. The decision of the Board of School Directors on the concerned complaint or problem shall be deemed final. And the meaning of the policy isn't really changing, but the wording is cleaned up significantly, and we should probably give Mr. Kern credit for some of that surgery, right?
All in a day's work.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Okay, so, when I scroll down and I look at some of the policies that are below, for instance, the Section 400 professional personnel, and I scroll down further, it says, last modified January 17th, 2019. Was that something that the board voted on? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, you can, we would have brought it up in Policy Committee and then read it. I wasn't at the January meeting, so I think Mr. Kern was reading those policies, right?
But in order for them to be changed, they should come to the board for a vote? Is that right?
The process is that the policy is reviewed by the committee and moved forward. The first reading is listed on the board agenda, and then there's a second reading, which also is board approval. That's the way that the process works. So, any policies that were reviewed in January, at the January meeting, or tonight, that were approved to move forward, are now having their first reading. Policies that were approved before that have moved through the first reading, and tonight are having the second reading and approval. That's how the policy approval process works.
Well, I'm, just bear with me here. I'm confused because, so, you're saying that the ones that are below here, that show that they have been updated last, this month or last month, have been approved by the board? I don't recall that.
I think she's referring to the top section, the ones that were actually second reading back in September, but no formal vote was taken. So, if you look at the dates on those, they're actually dated September 2018, like Policy 400 you mentioned.
Yeah.
So, I think that might be the clarification. They were actually done in September.
Okay, they were actually reviewed.
No, they're being voted on tonight. They had their first reading, and for some reason, they were never listed on the subsequent agenda for approval. They had committee review, were referred, went, had their first reading, but then they weren't listed the next month to be approved.
Because it says modified January 17th. This right here, this, let me show you what I'm talking about. Aw, crap.
What's the date of the policy?
Let me pull this back up, hold on.
Because you might be.
Look, I'm talking about these, go down. Oh, wait, that's.
January 17th.
Go back. See? Why was that modified? It never did come to the board for a vote.
So, the footer, this says, last modified by Heidi on January 17th, 2019.
Oh, that's the last date that someone logged into Board Docs to make changes to the draft. That doesn't have any official weight.
Okay, that's the clarification.
In Board Docs, when you go into the policy, the last person that went in there and made changes to the draft, so when Heidi edited the draft, that's apparently the last date that she was in there, doing that, right? It doesn't have anything to do with the approval date, which is listed at the top of the policy.
It's like an audit trail in my life.
Yes, yeah.
So, those, but those have, have, those are going to be voted on tonight? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure which, in the Policy Committee report is listed the policies that are being approved for second reading and approval tonight, and a number of policies that are listed for first reading, meaning that they come back at the next meeting for second reading and approval.
There's three sections.
Yes, I'm looking at that. The second reading, I see that, the first reading, I see that. Policy submitted for first reading, I see that.
Yep.
And then, down at the very bottom, okay, those are the ones that were second reading. They just happened to be attached below. Is that correct? Thank you.
Was your question answered? Are you?
Yeah, it is. Now, that makes sense. Some of, it looks like the ones that are for second reading are the ones that are actually attached there. Is that, that sounds right?
Yes, that would make sense.
Okay, that, thank you.
Yeah, and if you, in Board Docs, if you go to the Policy section and not the Agenda section, and in the dropdown, there's a section called Draft. That's where you can find the recommended revisions. If they've been reviewed by the committee, then they've been accepted by the committee already, and.
One more time, you said it's policies and then?
Just go under the Policy dropdown, and instead of picking Active, just pick Draft. And that's where the policies that are in process, where they're edited with all the strikeouts and all of that, that's where those show up, Mrs. Mitchell.
This is very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, yes, we're retiring one more policy. It's policy number 802. It's a school organization policy. We decided it was superfluous, so it's being retired. And then, the last policy that was discussed this evening is policy number 803, has to do with the school calendar, and it just says that the board recognizes that the preparation of a calendar is necessary for the efficient operation of the district. The board shall determine annually the days and the hours when the schools shall be in session for instructional purposes in accordance with state law. Such school calendars shall normally consist of 180 student days. And the superintendent or designee shall prepare a school calendar for board consideration annually, and the board reserves the right to alter the school calendar when it is in the best interest of the district. And there were some other policies that we've discussed, but we've tabled until the next meeting.
Excellent.
Right, Nancy Anne, did I miss anything?
No, ma'am, you did not.
And that's it for the Policy Committee report.
And moving on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Deliberto.
Good evening, everyone. Since our last board meeting, we actually had two committee meetings. The first one was on January 24th. There were six topics that were covered. The first one was, the auditors came in from Barbekane and Thornton. They audited our financial statements, and they said they were happy to report in the unmodified opinion with respect to the financial statements. Everything was checked out there. The second item was, there was a change in carrier for the life and disability insurance. Multiple firms responded. Mutual of Omaha was selected and netted a savings of $90,000. First look benefit numbers were presented. First look resulted in a combined increase of about 7.6%, which equated about $600,000. There was a first look at Forecast 5 Dashboard and Reports. There was a preliminary budget presented. The expenditures were at $114 million on revenues of $112 million, with the deficit presented at 2.4, which included $400,000 for Ronald Reagan Boulevard. The operational shortfall was roughly $2 million. And then, the last item covered in that meeting was a change in the student activity accounts and approval levels, and was only for the student activity accounts. The approval level changed from the board to the COO. Any questions on the committee?
Thank you very much, sir.
And then, the second meeting was actually tonight, on the 28th. There's also six topics covered. There was a budget update. There were, since the January meeting, an increase in revenues and also an increase in expenditures, but the net change was a reduction of about $95,000. There were.
To the good.
Reduction, yeah. To the good.
But it's the right direction.
Key department budgets were reviewed, the facilities budget, the OTL, the technology, special ed, and athletics and activities. A second look at. A second look at the benefits numbers was presented. The original increase was 7.66%. The second look is actually a reduction of 1.16%, another good in the right direction. There was a discussion on student cafeteria lunch debt. There's been a dramatic increase in the student cafeteria account for debit balances. Over the last year, it's approximately tripled.
Can you repeat that?
We talked about the student account lunch debt.
Yeah.
And over the past year, that amount has almost tripled.
Do you remember the absolute value? Yeah, explain it again.
So, two years ago, I don't know if you've remembered, it was Act 55, everybody called it the lunch shaming law. The unintended consequence of that, and this is not something that's local, this is something most districts are seeing, is that there is a dramatic increase in the amount of lunch debt on student accounts. So, for example, last year, mid-year, I believe, we had about $6,000, which was triple what we used to have. So that was in the first year. Already through this year, we're about $18,000 in lunch debt. So because you can no longer deny a lunch and some of those things, students put it in blunt words, don't have to pay for lunch. That doesn't mean à la carte, that's your base lunch. So what we did this year, it's really for next year, is Lynn Rowlandson has put a line item in the budget, about $20,000, because we're going to be in a situation where the general fund is going to have to be supplementing the food service fund. So for those of you who don't know, the food service fund is not part of the general fund. Taxpayers don't pay for that. It's an enterprise fund. It pays for itself through, through the sale of lunches and breakfast. So it's no longer able to break even, and a big part of that is that lunch debt. And I believe the Finance Committee, I believe they recommended handing that over to the Policy Committee just to take a look at that.
I mean, we certainly don't suck the, the, Pete and Company with the debt, do we?
No, we have to supplement it with the general fund to pay for that.
As we should.
One thing I want the board to consider is that, and this is just my personal stance on this, the one thing that the Policy Committee is going to have to review is how do we handle the situations where there's debt for lunch? And I firmly believe that students should not be penalized for this. To me, it's something that is parents' responsibility. Now, granted, apparently there may be people taking advantage. I totally understand that, but the Policy Committee will need to be looking at what type of consequences, how do we hold people accountable? And then the board would, would need to vote on that. So just be thinking about what your, your position is, I guess, on enforcing that.
I think we should have a table with bread and peanut butter and jelly and MYO. You can make your own.
I think some districts actually do that.
You know, just as cheap as possible, provide ways for people...
I don't think we're allowed to have peanut butter.
But we are, we are. My...
That's what I ate my whole, my whole school career was brown bag with peanut butter and jelly.
I have a question around that. Do, you know, and I'm all for understanding subsidy programs and agree, you know, that students shouldn't starve at the expense of their adult. Do you, are they vetted, though? Like, is there some type of, I mean, is like...
Don't ask, don't tell.
I mean, I don't know, like, I mean...
So there's, there's free and reduced, which is not part of these numbers because their lunch is free or reduced. Anybody that has a lunch debt, we send letters out every other week home to their parents, either through email or through snail mail. That's about all we, we can do.
I recommended that we...
So there's no, there's no, in other words, it's not necessarily, this program, I'm sure, was, was designed to take care of underfunded families, families with little income, right? Got to imagine that's the basis of it.
Well, that's, that was one of the recommendations I had, was to make, to inform these parents, some of them who may have this large amount of debt, that if their circumstance changed, then they should be aware that they may be eligible for free and reduced lunch. The problem is, is that we're talking about possibly holding kids back from like graduation if they don't pay. That's what the Policy Committee is going to have to determine, what type of consequence would you want to make? And, and I am saying that, that I feel like we need to figure out a way to hold the parents accountable without penalizing the, the students, and also make the parents aware of the resources that they have if their circumstance changed.
May I, free and reduced lunches only, or we're not allowed to ask for money? Every kid gets a lunch, like, that's the deal.
Correct, yes.
So, so it's not a matter of like how we're going to enforce it. I mean, we can't selectively go to certain people and be like, you got to pay, but they don't. We have to ask everybody to pay.
No, we're talking about the debt. What do we do with the kids who have thousand, like, let's say you have $1,000, and, because when you go and get lunch, then, and you don't have money, that debt accumulates. So what, what they're saying, what we're going to have to figure out is, what do we do about that?
But you don't have to figure that out, because you can't go after them for that money. Am I understanding this correct? We are asking.
I don't know, that's true.
They can.
So there's, there's free and reduced, which is not what we're talking about. It's the students that aren't on free and reduced. We, we do go after the money, but it's through letters home to their parents. What happens, though, is if the parents simply don't pay, the lunch, the debt just keeps piling up because there's, there's no change in, in the practice. The student is able to, to continue to get a lunch without paying, and it, and it escalates.
If the family doesn't qualify for free or reduced lunch, we are allowed to penalize them in some way, we'll call it that.
No.
Well, so what the law says, and Jeff Garten can correct me if I'm wrong, there was a change in the law because a lot of school districts were seeing a rise in debt. You can institute a, a consequence, but it has to be the same consequence you institute for any other debt. So here's an example, if, if you break your laptop, your school issued laptop, and the consequence is that if you don't pay for the damages to that laptop, you can't go to a dance. That same consequence could apply to student lunch debt, but you can't have like a specific consequence just for student lunch debt, if that makes sense. And I believe that is what was going to be, going to the Policy Committee to have a conversation about.
And Mr. President, I would suggest that this, the rest of this conversation should be had the Policy Committee, so we can move the meeting along.
Wonderful. Thank you for humoring me with my questions.
Great.
And we are moving along, if there's no one else.
Two more quick things.
Oh.
Sorry. Just so you guys are all informed. There was a discussion on the athletic and activity funding. The unit pay funding for stipends for coaches was discussed, and then also funding for uniforms, or looking for possible increase of roughly $17,000 more for the year. And then the last item was just a couple informational items. There were some benchmarking shared with us about per pupil spending, staffing ratios, and average salaries. The board will be voting to approve continuing with the second round of borrowing from NES per PFM's presentation. This was provided to all of you. And we'll be moving up the request by a couple of months. Is that because of favorable lending rates?
Yeah, PFM recommended moving the borrowing up about three or four months from the original date, I believe they presented last year, to make sure we're capturing favorable interest rates.
And then there's a discussion, the administrations recommending extending our Chartwell's contract through the 2019-2020 year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to take a pause here in the standing reports. If known as any objection, I want to recognize, I saw a Boy Scout in the audience, you know, and it brings me back to my Boy Scout days, and I'm thinking, ah, he must be here earning his communications merit badge, you know, type situation, or citizenship or something to that effect.
Sir, would you please come to the podium?
Please.
This poor kid, you guys are putting him on the spot like this.
He's being prepared.
Okay, you're really earning this communication thing.
Introduce yourself real quick, if you don't mind.
My name's Thomas Pruitt. I'm with Boy Scout Troop 334 of Laura Milford.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, welcome. And you're here earning your communications merit badge?
Yep.
Yeah? So you, don't you have to public, do public speaking for that merit badge, if I recall, from 25 years ago when I was in scouting?
I actually had to. I did most of the merit badge at a Boy Scout camp, and we had, the one thing I didn't have completed was I had to attend a meeting.
Okay.
So that's, I'm currently finishing.
What school do you attend?
I'm, I go to Southern Lehigh School District. I'm in their school district, but I go to Salem Christian School.
Welcome to Quaker Town.
Thank you.
Yeah, was, was it just like the most convenient locally scheduled public meeting? Pretty much.
Best website for explaining the work.
You're hiding your rank badge. What rank are you there?
Oh, we have good website.
Oh, I'm currently a tenderfoot, but...
And Mom, I'll tell you, I always say this, every Boy Scout that comes before you, the one regret I have in my life is not getting my Eagle. I was six merit badges into life, and I just stopped and enjoyed the world for a while. Don't, don't let them do that.
Do you, do you have to do a project? Do you have to complete a project?
For, for Eagle. You have to, once you're at your Eagle rank. But, well, yeah, we had three days off for winter break, so we decided that we were going to complete at least two Eagle required merit badges.
Nice. That's awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm an Eagle myself, actually. I hope you make order of the arrow, if you have not yet. Dr. Harner, also Eagle Scout as well. Well, thank you so much for coming and bringing your son for this fantastic experience. You, you sure picked a real exciting night.
A real winner, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. You guys, drive safely. Moving on to the standing committee reports, next, Ms. Mitchell.
I have two, I have two meetings to report on as well, right, Zach? Because we had, January 22nd was our last meeting. I don't see that we've met since then, have we? Oh, not the one from tonight, you're saying?
Was the one for finance?
No, I'm talking about for facilities.
You just have the January 22nd.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, so, you're not allowed to do that to me, I'm allowed to do that to you first. Okay, so capital projects update. As you all know, we have been investing $1 million each year to make sure that our facilities are maintained, and so we discussed the revised list of projects updated by Dewey Engineering, and that includes HVAC controls at Richland Elementary School, ticket booth repairs at Quakertown Community High School, district-wide sidewalk replacement, sixth grade center radon system repair, alumni visitor bleacher repairs, facility building roof replacement, and sixth grade center gym roof. These are all items that were listed as poor and in need of replacement, and that's why those are being prioritized. The facilities department receives throughout the year some concerns about temperatures within classrooms, so all the classrooms, the temperatures are set by Board Policy 817, and that guidance is to say that they want classrooms between 68 and 71 degrees. And we were taking a look to see if there was any financial impact of increasing the, the temperature to more of like a 71 to 74 degrees, which, by the way, I was not in favor of, because that just seems a little bit warm for me. But even doing so, it would have, it would have only resulted in a minimal savings, and so the administration and the committee did not recommend making any changes for the, for those financial reasons. We had a facility assessment review. When former facilities director Kelly Harper resigned, the district contracted with Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials to bring in Mr. Bolts as the interim facilities director. In addition to serving in that role, he completed a facilities assessment review for the entire facilities department. And I'm happy to say that he mentioned that we were the best managed facilities department that he's ever stepped into, so great job to the facilities department. Moving up, what's that?
You said kudos.
Yeah, it's great, great news. Update on the baseball field and investigation in batting cages. So we have been having a heck of a time, or I should say, the baseball team has been having a heck of a time trying to find places where they can, can play, because we have, we don't have a reliable field for them. And the board is going to be presented tonight with a motion to approve purchasing batting cages for the senior high school and, for there, and two at the middle school, starter middle school. And the cost for this is estimated to be around $27,000. Now, our maintenance department is going to be doing the majority of the work to get those batting cages fit together. It's going to allow the baseball and softball teams to take outside batting practice when the fields are too wet to practice on. And we're, we're also investigating ways that we can, long-term, think of how we're going to resolve the problem of not having anywhere, not having a reliable field, so, so we're definitely looking into how we can do that. It, it probably will be a significant cost in the future. I just want to let the board know, there may be an opportunity for us to use fill from or moving soil from the Nightig project to raise the field behind the sixth grade center. That's something that we're looking at. Depending on whether or not that counts back as a, as an option, I'll report back to you all, just letting you know some of the things that we're, we're looking at in terms of options. And then upcoming action items in January, the committee was presented with information to complete the sixth grade center parking lot lighting project, and the committee approved moving forward with that project, and will be taking it to the board for a vote. Committee was presented with a proposal from Dewey Engineering to work with the administration in developing bid packets, including design work, overseeing the completion of the most needy capital projects. And the board at a prior meeting approved going out to bid to compete the capital projects for 2018, 2019. The administration recommends utilizing the services of Dewey Engineering to move forward, and the committee recommends moving forward, and will take it to the board for a vote as well. Did anybody else have anything to contribute? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. Jackson, your back-to-back-to-back reports on the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, the Legislative Report, and the QCEF.
Do you want to get a committee report from somebody else?
Whatever, yeah. Oh, sorry, I totally skipped it because he wasn't here, and that is proper, so I, I, sorry.
So the Education Curriculum Committee met on February 11th, and we talked about several topics. First, we talked about the Academy at Quakertown program. The program has been very successful so far this year, and we are looking to increase the number of seats for students to 60 for next year, and that's in grade seven through 12. So you'll see an associated staffing increase with that in the budget that's already been presented to the Finance Committee. We talked about second grade swimming initiative. The district has been fortunate to be able to partner with both the Upper Perk YMCA and the Quakertown YMCA to provide water safety lessons to our second graders, not swimming lessons, but actually water safety experience. So more information and specifics about when the buildings will be participating in that will be forthcoming. We did also talk about Rachel's Challenge at this meeting. We decided to have further discussion with building principals and administration to determine if this is something that we would like to look at. We've already reached out about costs and where this could potentially fit with our current practices, and some of the other programs that we are already doing, as Dr. Harner mentioned, PBIS in, in our buildings, and we also have other programs through teaching tolerance that we're already using. We have the Peace Center coming into all of our fourth grade classrooms, so just trying to see where that would fit. And finally, we spent the bulk of our discussion on data, and we presented the building and grade level data on reading and math, and had some great conversation about how, how we were going to move some of those numbers in a more positive direction. As I said, at that meeting, our office has also engaged in conversations with administrators and teachers about their specific data, trying to provide supports, whatever, you know, they feel that they can, can use for us, looking at adjusting curriculum. All of those conversations are very teacher-centered right now, and, and providing the support at that level, since they're the ones who are in the classroom with the students. And we did also then circle back around to our conversation about cyber French. I did find a cyber provider who is willing to work with the district next year, so for, for that, for that thing that had come up a number of times, we have that finally settled at this meeting, and we can move forward once we have course selection numbers in place for any students who wish to take that course. And that's the end of the report.
So for the record, we're working with a provider for one particular class.
We do have a number of providers that we work with whenever we don't have the capacity to do it in-house. So our, our current MOU with our teachers' union is that if a teacher would like to, to teach the cyber class... the cyber class, we have a number of agreements in place for them to be able to do that. Because we don't have a French class, we wouldn't have curriculum or books or anything for anyone to be able to do that. So the conversation has been that for this class, we would go to an outside provider.
Just wanted to point that out. Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Start with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, the intermediate unit meant on February the 19th. I included the Board Digest, which is a summary of actions taken during that meeting, and the Awesome News, which highlights a lot of the programs going on. I would bring up that Ms. Caseman dropped in front of me today a ballot for election, just a point of procedure, just as I am appointed by this board to represent Quakertown at the IU. Every other school board appoints another member. Being part of the IU in a way as ascending school district, we as a board, a nine-member board, have to approve the other members of the school district who are being sent by their boards to represent the IU by their own board. So rather than passing this around, question is, is everybody okay with me simply marking yes to all these applicants and signing and?
Has to be a ballot for each board.
Does it have to be a ballot for each board member?
All board members have a copy of that and just.
We just check this and then sign it?
Pretty much, I'm just asking you to check and sign.
Aye.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants the job, you know? That's just, you know, at your leisure, doesn't have to be right this second, so. So that's the end of my IU report. Moving on to the legislative report. I don't want to go through all of these, but I do include every month these days, a copy of information about what Harrisburg is doing. A good example of what Harrisburg can do to really screw up everybody's day is what we're just talking about with Safe to Say. It's a great program. We all love the idea of the program. The issue is the unintended consequences, which we've seen, the task on our manpower, both administrative and the teachers themselves, the guidance. I'm not sure how Doc's feeling about it, but he's probably a little bit, working a little longer than normal on this one as well. All right? So there's items to be aware of in legislative report that you should all take a look at at your leisure. These are all committee reports. Committee bills being moved up the chain right now. I don't believe any of them is on the floor for an up or down vote yet, so just things to be aware of. And that's the end of my legislative report. Moving on to the Ed Foundation. Thank you, Mrs. Rich, for stopping by to say thank you. We did grant her organization a mini-grant so she could take the Future Business Leaders of America to a retreat, I suppose. Yeah, we did have a student representative, or I believe one of our student speakers was part of that program, so it's a great program.
It was her, wasn't it?
She was here.
Yeah. It was her girl in the end.
Yeah. So, and as far as the Ed Foundation, I always bring it up to the few teachers who are here that they're always looking to give out mini-grants. Those are usually about $500 for programs the teachers think are helpful. But I will speak out to the administrators in the room. The Ed Foundation, for a while, has been looking to make a big splash for a large amount of donation, somewhere between $10,000 to $20,000 for a resource that a school needs that would be an ongoing resource, not like a one-time trip or a, you know, we don't want to fund the language trip or anything like that, but a nice piece of technology, a curriculum, a leadership course, something at the school level. The Ed Foundation is really looking for guidance from the district level as to what would be the best use of such funding that we have readily available, just bringing that to the district's attention.
What's the budget for that, for the Ed Foundation annually? I'm just curious.
It really depends. It's self-funded. I mean, we're always looking for donations. We just did a donation drive-through for most of the vendors for the district. We reached out to all of them, saying, hey, we support the Ed Foundation. I'm not going to get into the financials too much, but we do have a decent amount of change in the bank, and we are always doing fundraisers like any other charity organization. You raise your money, you spend it. You raise it again, you spend it again. And we've, it's been a long time since the Ed Foundation has made a big splash, and they're essentially, they're desperate to do so. But we need a direction from the district for where they might think a good use of such funding is.
You could use some batting cages or a baseball field.
Typically, it's an educational resource, just saying so. And that concludes the Ed Foundation report.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And, Mr., oh, what's that?
Oh, that was a good question.
Worth a shot, but I understand, and I believe that spending it on some sort of education or tool or permanent resource like you guys have planned to would, admirable. Thank you. I am going to give the Upper Bucks County Technical School report. Superintendent Jeff Sweater reported on a total of donations. I did not do the total. I apologize. It wasn't shoddy, though. Food truck sponsorship. We have implemented a plan, Jeff did. He's in the process of implementing a plan for the idea of a food truck. We have sponsorships specifically for that particular undertaking in the amount of $500,000 in just a short month or two. Donations designated towards welding and mechatronics totaling about $1,500 as well. Care of the Montgomeryville Cycle Center and Bob Jones. He donated a Kawasaki 2005 Ninja to the small motors program. National Honor Society, we had 47 new inductees on February 11th for the school year. Upper Bucks County Technical School Student of the Month is Kristen Phillips from the Culinary Arts Program. She's a senior from Pen Ridge. There were no subcommittee meetings to report on in February at this time that I can remember. The board approved some personnel changes and approved a retirement, approved an amendment to the executive director's contract as well. Revised the 2018-29 calendar with updated snow days. We discussed our proposed budget for the 2019-2020 plan year, passing it and passing it on with an initial projection of just over $11,500, $600,000. The food truck undertaking I mentioned earlier is a co-op undertaking and program with the culinary department. We're going to offer internships that are paid with relatively reasonable hourly rates. The pay is actually funded through donations and grants, and most of the food truck will be paid for, ideally, with donations and grants as well. Also, the truck will, there's also a side plan to make sure that the truck is used to show sponsors to help us recoup some of the payment and gas. Motion was approved to approve students and advisory adults to attend Skills USA PA State Leadership and Skills Championship in Hershey. We approved the initial budget ahead of time, even though we didn't know how many bodies were going, because we are not meeting again until after they need approval. The next regular JOC board meeting is scheduled for March 21st, 2019. And I have no other notes at this time. Public comment on the fiscal items that are coming up for a vote. Public comment. Anybody would like to make a public comment on the fiscal agenda? Moving on. Motion to approve the fiscal agenda as presented.
What's that?
We're approving the January 2019 Bosch &amp; James Bills List, and then we're also going to vote on the fiscal, yeah, vote on the fiscal agenda, yes.
We'll move on then.
Thank you very much. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Keith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Do you work for them?
Motion passes, six plus one abstention. We are moving on to the fiscal consent agenda, and I have to read all these offs, right? Approval of the budget transfer for December 2018, January 2019. Approved the December 2018 Treasurers Report. Approved the January 2019 Treasurers Report. Approved the January 2019 Bills List. Approved the, quote, "to purchase school outdoor batting cages for the senior high schools and Strayer Middle Schools." Approved the production contract with Musical Theater International for Fiddler on the Roof. Approved contract with Mutual of Omaha as the district's life and disability carrier effective April 1st, 2019. Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 Programs and Services Instruction Materials and Research Services 2019-2020 Proposal. Approved the proposed budget resolution to appoint new tax collector for Richland Township. Approved water filtration and service rental agreement with Quench USA. Approved school messenger contract. Request permission to solicit bids for Nightig Elementary School addition and renovation. Approved proceedings with second round bond insurance. Excuse me, issuance. Sorry about that. Approved proceedings with the second round of the bond issuance.
Can I motion to, I'm sorry. Can I motion to remove one of these items out for further discussion?
Which one?
Do I have to motion for that, right?
Can we approve it and just go through and?
You can just ask it one be removed, because he hasn't, no one's made a motion yet.
Okay. I wanted to remove the school messenger contract. I have some questions about that.
All right, we're going to separate this. First, we're going to approve the fiscal agenda less the school messenger contract for discussion, and then we will approve, we will then vote on the school messenger discussion second afterwards. Yes, okay. Is everybody happy with that? Because I think we can get all the other stuff out of the way.
Are we doing it right, Mr. Garten?
All right. Motion to approve the presented agenda less Schedule K.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And then, discussion. You had a question about Fiddler?
Oh, no.
No? That's what he said. I heard him. Was that a joke?
John was being joking.
Do we have the motion first before, yes?
Make a motion in a second, so you have it on the table to discuss.
Okay, so I will motion to vote on the school messenger contract.
I second that.
So my question is, if everybody wants to take a look at, this is what we were discussing earlier, as far as the having this group for the stay safe, is that, no, this is something different?
This is for us.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like we're closing early or?
This one would be replaced and also our website would get redone to an ADA compliant platform.
And search might work?
You're not supposed to say that out loud, though I noticed.
So wait, this includes us redoing our website?
Yes.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Current website to a new, more mobile-friendly and also replace our current connected system with one platform.
Okay.
After year one, it's about $9,000 in reduction.
Okay, that's actually not a bad, too bad a price. When do you think that project is, would be expected to be completed, just because I'm excited about it?
Our current Blackboard contract, which is why we're placing this under board.
Okay.
Ends in July, actually, I think it's August, but the goal is, as soon as we sign this, our billing cycle will start July 1.
Okay.
We'll start implementation now, so we're ready for a cut over when our Blackboard contract expires.
And it'll launch already?
Nice.
Yeah.
Well, that is exciting. Okay.
Anybody have any other questions about it before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
A for a new website.
Website?
That's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, kidding. Another committee. Public comment on the facilities consent agenda. Any public comment? Facilities consent agenda, motion to approve the Dewey Services Agreement, capital projects, motion to approve the finishing of the parking lot and light project at the sixth grade center. Do I have a motion to approve? Anyone? Kaylin Mitchell, second?
Second.
Ms. Jenny Weed.
Can I ask a question about the parking lot lights? Do we, did we do that in-house or did we contract that out?
In-house. So if you remember, I believe it was a change order to the parking lot project, and the board at that time, it was a lot of money, it was like $200,000, said, we're not going to do that. But we put the, what's the word I'm looking for? The basin? Yeah, in. And then we did the first round. The facilities team did it. We had to buy the materials, and then they installed it. So this is just to finish it out. So we would have to buy the materials, but Rob's team would actually install them. That's why it's significantly less than the numbers that you remember from, maybe it was a year ago now.
Yeah, all right. That's what I'm thinking.
They do it all. You guys are awesome.
Oil lamps?
Gas.
You got the guy that's kind of walking on the sidewalk with the pole.
The lamp later.
Keeps people employed.
All right, moving on. Does anybody else have any other questions or discussion to this point? What's that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public comment on the Human Resources Agenda items presented for this evening? Any public comment? And board members, motion to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda. We're going to discuss the professional staff, unit pay, substitute staff, and support staff. All in favor? Do I have a primary motion?
Can I make a motion to remove A from this and vote on them separately?
Do you want to remove the whole A or A1A?
Yeah, I'd like to just remove a whole A.
The whole A, the whole thing. Okay, so we're going to primarily vote on the unit pay line item, the substitute staff line item, and the support staff sections, and we're going to parcel out the A professional staff, and we're going to come back to that when we're done. Motion to approve unit pay substitute staff and support consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? I mean, it's, this is the vote, right? So at this point, yeah. Oh, discussion, I thought we just did.
No, we've removed A out, right?
All right.
I'm only asking because I want to abstain from that vote.
Oh, okay.
Remove people, so.
All right, so any discussion on the unit pay substitute staff or support staff? Nope? All right. We'll go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously for line items B, C, and D, and we're going to come back and we're going to revote on this professional staff line item. Does anybody have any, motion to approve discussion on the line item A professional staff?
I'll motion.
Second? Someone?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, we're going to take this specific agenda item to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have to abstain?
You specifically, you have to abstain.
You have to abstain.
Abstain right away, or do I?
No, you can wait for an hour, and we can just sit here.
Yeah, go on then. Take your time, Keith.
Ah, I got, well, you wouldn't know somebody didn't say yes or no, so you should have to point out that, right, okay. All right. Motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Correct?
Yes.
All right.
He does that every time.
Making that is complicated.
No, you didn't. It was just, it's more me procedurally, that's all. I apologize. Public comment on policies and programs items presented for a vote this evening. Open floor? Anyone? Moving on. Policy and programs consent agenda items, approved settlement agreement for student number as listed, approved safe-to-stay service agreement. Vote on policy and, all right, do I hear a primary motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. No one has any discussion points? We will vote. All in favor to pass the policy and program consent agenda as listed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Information I don't. Information items for the community. Let's see, I did not review this. Okay, some of us board members must return some ethics forms and we will do that immediately. Suspension reports? I don't have to read this off, I don't think Stephen normally does. In the board briefing book, okay. All right, board members, this is your opportunity to come up with any new business that may have been on your mind all night.
We have some new business on the agenda.
The volunteer policy?
We do.
Yes, that's it.
And then the PBSa yearly membership also is on this list. Does anybody else want to add anything?
I do want to add something, but let's get through these first if that's all right.
Sure. We have the volunteer motion to approve the board, actually you don't need it, which is just discussion, okay, let's talk volunteer policy. Who wants to start?
I would, if it's okay.
Of course.
So, I think when this, when this first came about for a board discussion, well, really it wasn't, there wasn't really too much discussion in, at least for me, context in regards to what our policy was and how it apply, how did it compare to what the state recommends? So, after, I, I would like to, to, you know, try to keep this particular resident name anonymous. So if you all saw in your email, there is, there's a guidance from the recent Commonwealth Court rulings concerning Act 24 and this is specifically regarding our policy or any, any board policy as it pertains to volunteers' ability, I should say, community members' ability to volunteer within the school districts. One thing that I thought was really compelling, it says, "School entities should continue to apply the employment," which just, in case you all don't know, we, and correct me if I'm wrong Nancy, and we use pretty much the same standards, if not a little bit more strict, than the standards that we would have for someone who wanted to be employed by the district. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we use PA School Code, PDE is the governing body, not the Department of Human Services, so we use that because they don't typically, they don't necessarily reference volunteer in that law. They reference employee, but the definition of employee, if you read it, I believe would also apply to a volunteer.
Okay.
But yes, we use this, we use the same standard.
Okay. So the recommend?
Clarify what a volunteer is.
Sure, so you have visitors who come in and they get raptured in, they might go in to read to the class or there might be a birthday or something like that. A visitor is, is like a chaperone. You have the care supervision, supervision, guidance and control of children during it, your time at the school. So for example, you might go on a field trip and, and teacher might break the class up into groups and each chaperone takes a group to walk around wherever they are at. So that person would be a volunteer.
Thank you. So it says, "School entities should continue to apply the employment prohibitions contained in Section 111 of the Pennsylvania School Code on a case-by-case basis." Notice, case-by-case basis, "with student's safety serving as paramount consideration. If a school official after a due diligence investigative investigation of the facts surrounding an offense and in consultation with his legal counsel concludes in good faith that the application of Section 111 to an individual would violate the Pennsylvania Constitution as interpreted by a Pennsylvania court, PDE would not sanction the school official for employing the individual. In this determination, it's critical that a school officially, excuse me, official carefully consider the nature of the offense as it relates to student's safety and the person's suitability for school employment when the offense occurred and the person's current position." So the PDE is recommending that, there are certain, just so you all know, there are certain offenses that are absolutely a non-negotiator, like any, any sort of violent crime, felon, violent felony crime, I believe. And so there's some, some additional factors, there's a lot of different contexts that the PDE recommends. And what I thought was really interesting was, and again, this is in your board docs, when I looked at the surrounding districts, so I would recommend you pull that up, when you look at the surrounding districts, there's probably 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 on this list. I can't see one that doesn't do it in some cases, but unless it's a violent crime, that is a felony, it seems like all the other districts are reviewing some of this on a case-by-case basis. Am I accurate so far?
I don't know which other districts probably apply that standard.
Where was this information, I guess this survey that was done, it looks like it was done in end of last year, who compiled that information?
Barb Phillips in the HR office. So if that's what it says, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I'd have to call every HR director and speak with them directly and, you know, there's, I'm sure there's more details to, to how.
Well, it's, it's pretty straightforward. What do you do when a volunteer has a criminal record not identified as a disqualifying offense? So there's a difference, there's a reportable offense and there's such things as a disqualifying offense, okay? And if you look here, every single district has this by a case-by-case basis. So why is this important, you might ask? The reason it's important is, I am all for school safety. I am absolutely all for school safety. But I also do not want to continue to disenfranchise someone for a nonviolent crime that they've paid their time for. They're trying to simply be involved, maybe it's a grandparent, maybe it's a parent, maybe it's an aunt or uncle, but I don't think that we should have a hard line, which is what we have now. We have a fairly hard line on our policies that I would like to know an explanation from the administration as to why we are not in, I don't want to say compliance, why we're not taking the guidance of the PDE and why we're so different than the surrounding districts.
Can I make one comment real quick? It won't take but a second. I do not wish to end discussion if this board wants to discuss this topic right here, right now. I do not. However, at the end of the day, this is a policy committee thing, the policy committee will have to change their policies. And I would ask that for, again, for length of time, the policies committee simply take up.
Can I ask you why we can't discuss this right now?
I said, we certainly can, but again, we are not going to.
The policy committee did already discuss it and one of the problems is, the administrative regulation is what is guiding this policy. It's not policy. So the administrative regulation is stating something that is contradictory, which again, could leave us open to legislative, we, we could be liable as a district if we are enforcing something that goes against what the guidance of the PDE is and we're clearly an outlier if we're looking at all these other districts and none of them enforce this. And, and I think it's, to me, it, it's important, I, I want to know what, what's the reason why we wouldn't look at these on a case-by-case? Why would we have such stricter rules? Sure, it's easier.
It's easier.
But then that parent and that grandparent is missing out on possibly, you know?
And I agree with you, I think it was the same discussion that we had about a former board member that had an issue 30 years ago and we're still holding him accountable to this day. And so I think, I, I think that it's a slippery slope, I don't disagree, we should, we could probably look at it again. And I don't know that it has to be a lifelong sentence, I think the.
That's what it is though, it's a lifetime ban. That's what I'm trying to tell you guys, it's a lifetime ban, there's no, we don't look at this by a case-by-case basis. So in this particular situation, this resident who emailed the board was cleared by the Department of, what is it, Child Services? But PDE's recommendation is that you follow the Department of Child Services, isn't that what I'm reading here?
So I can just maybe correct a few things because I pulled up the survey that you, you had and it says, "What do you do when volunteer has a criminal record not identified as a disqualifying offense under Section 111?" So not to use names, but the email you're referring to, that individual does have a disqualifying offense per.
No, it's a reportable offense, it's not a disqualifying offense.
No, any felony conviction under Section 111 is a 10-year ban.
Um.
Lifetime ban.
I will have to pull it up right now.
Actually, Mr. Garten might be the person asked for that.
Do you have?
I don't have the, I don't have the record of the individual that is in question. But the lifetime ban only applies to an enumerated list of.
Right.
Serious child abuse.
Yes.
Homicide, things like that. You know, the person in question is concerned about the 10-year ban, which has to do with enumerated felonies, am I right?
Yeah, so there's Section 111E, which is a lifetime ban. Then there's Section 111F, which is, I might have the F and G's wrong, but a felony conviction is a 10-year ban and then there's a, I believe it's off the top of my head, a five-year ban for other, yeah, for like a misdemeanor of the first degree. So they're all Section 111 offenses and they all come with different levels of bans. One, Section 111E is the more significant criminal records where that is a lifetime ban, but any felony offense under Section 111 i- is a ban. And, and this would be more of a Jeff Garten question, but the PDE guidance is specifically for employment purposes only because there's constitutional rights with, with employment. It does not apply to, to volunteers and it's not technically the law as well, so.
Well, if this person was employed with the district, they would have a right to sue us because we're discriminating against them, but because they're a volunteer, they can't.
They would, they would have a right, if they were seeking to be employed, to have the factors to be considered when you offer that person a position. I think, and I'm sort of cutting to the chase here, I think the concern is that no one in the administration wants to make the decision based on those competing factors. If you give clear direction, it's easy to say yes or no, but when you start talking about, you know, comparing person A who was convicted of this, person B, I think the concern is lack of clarity as to what the board would want to do under circumstance. Am I right?
We, I believe that's part of it and the other part was, so for example, if somebody in the administration was making those on a case-by-case basis, maybe parents wouldn't be okay with that. So who's to say the subjective opinion of the administration on what is and is not
Not your job?
Well, no, I'd actually be violating the law if I did that. PDE's guidance is not the law, the law says it's a 10-year ban. So if, so I would.
Other districts do it by a case-by-case basis. Now I'm, I'm getting kind of confused because I'm looking at our document that is an arrest and conviction report in certification form and if you go all the way to the bottom, there are what is considered a reportable offense. Right? So these are saying, these are reportable offenses, I'm not seeing anywhere where it's saying that it necessarily is a disqualifying, so what I want to understand is, and I'm happy if you guys, you know, want to take some time to, to get this stuff together, but the bottom line for me is, I am not okay with someone who committed a nonviolent crime and someone who has been cleared by Child Human Services, that they can work with children. This is someone, the, the Department of, I forget the department, but these are people that specifically do background checks for, to see if someone can work with kids and they were cleared for that, but yet they're not cleared to volunteer for their kid's school.
I just wanted to provide one clarification. On the arrest and conviction form, everything that might qualify is reportable. Determining which category it falls into in terms of, of a ban or not is what you, how you evaluate the reportable offenses. But when it says reportable offense, it means anything that falls into those categories. So 111, Section 111E, Section 111F, first degree misdemeanors, anything that might fall under the law has to be reported. So you don't have to report a traffic ticket. If you were pulled over for speeding, that's not a reportable offense.
But if you got a DUI, it is.
Yes, if it was a misdemeanor.
All DUIs are misdemeanors.
Okay, so, so anything, so reportable is anything that falls in any of those categories you're required to disclose.
Do, so what do you go by?
The information about the, how long you are banned from employment is applied based on the specifics of the reportable offense. So a reportable offense is not separate from the offenses in all the categories. It's a way of saying, if you have any of these things, you have to disclose it on the form. So maybe that would help with the terminology.
Which by the way, guys, we used to be more, more, even more strict. We used to tell people who had any kind of misdemeanor that they could not participate.
Yes, the policy committee made a decision to change that in September. We surveyed at Mrs. Weed's request, the, the parent groups, so, and that information I think is in board docs also, because anybody who volunteers is going to be in the position of supervising and exercising care and control over other people's children and so.
But if they were cleared by.
The committee wanted to make sure that our parent groups were comfortable with the changes that we were proposing and their feedback is included in there as well.
I don't, I don't believe that they were given the full context, I really don't.
It's written right at the top of the form.
I'm looking at it and it doesn't say in any, any place in here, the context of the PDE guidance.
So maybe we need to look at it, make it clearer, get legal, you know, try to tighten it up, do whatever we need to, to make it more obvious.
I.
I think it requires direction from the board.
Right. So do we go off PDE guidance or we don't? I'm confused, you said we don't.
The guidance is not the law.
Well, clearly, there's some, there's some group of people who have done certain things that you feel are not egregious enough to prevent them from working with kids.
If they're cleared, again, I'm going to say this again, if they are cleared, if they had an FBI background check from the Department of Health and Human Services or Child Services that says that they can work with kids.
Okay.
But we're saying they can't even volunteer, I'm having a problem with that.
I just pulled the, the question up here. So, so under the General Assembly Act, this 111, it says, it says in here specifically that if you have a felony offense in the first, second or third degree, other than the ones enumerated above, person shall be eligible for continued and prospective employment only if a period of 10 years has elapsed. By the date of expiration of the sentence.
Can I, can I just ask one question about, this person can still attend events with their child?
They cannot, they cannot go to field days, they cannot do those kind of, can they? Because I was told that.
I mean, being a visitor?
She can go, she participates, she just doesn't.
She cannot be the one chaperone.
She can't manage other people's kids.
They're the one adult with a whole bunch of students, that's the issue.
She's allowed to be there, just not in charge.
So, but still, that's, that's important, guys, this is someone who, she wants to be involved with her kids and it, again, if somebody who does a much more thorough background check than we do, in terms of, it's like an FBI background check.
Yeah, we don't do any check.
I think the question at hand is, is it, is it, are we applying the law?
Well, the PDE is saying specifically that we should be doing this on a case-by-case basis, I'm confused.
But if, so then I think it has to go back to the, because, because I'm not, I sit on the policy committee and I'm not convinced that we have in place today a case-by-case basis for reviewing these to, to say yes or no.
We don't.
And I think we need to, I think we would really need to, as a district, apply some strict standards of how we, we want to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis.
But taking Ms.
So that what, what doesn't come up is that we are then saying, "I accept your case, I don't accept your case" and we don't have clear illustration of why we accepted one versus the other. And so I, I think it can, we can, we can absolutely look at it, but I think the number one question is, are we following the law?
I don't know that there is any law specific to this, Jeff, could you?
Well, because the Commonwealth Court opinion went to the issue of employment, not to the issue of volunteers, because volunteers don't have the same rights with respect to the privilege of volunteering, because the district controls whether you have the privilege of volunteering, whereas employees have a certain ability to have a property right and so forth. So the Commonwealth Court opinion did not go to volunteers, it went to employment. PDE is suggesting, well, maybe you ought to consider the same factors with volunteers, but it's not, definitively it's not the law, so.
I mean, if we use Ms. Mitchell's example, that somebody who gets an FBI clearance that is clear that they can work with children, okay, I, I, there you go, that's what, that's what your rub is, they get an FBI clearance that's flat out says they can work with children.
Yep. Yep.
I guess the-
Well, no, it will not be an affirmative yes. It will be that it did not show any of the enumerated lifetime bans like child abuse, or incest, or robbery.
Just, yeah, but just using her example, it literally, she, she posted an example where it literally said they were not banned from working with children.
There was no offenses, it would, it would be a, it wouldn't say, go ahead and hire them.
No, 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 correct, correct.
Right.
Okay, so as long as they have that, I guess the-
Does not prohibit hire in a childcare position according to Child Protective Services law.
The question I would have for, um, Mr. Schock and to our solicitor is whether or not we can craft a policy that we can live with that would permit people in that status to volunteer. Is it possible for us to craft such a policy? I don't, we can't do it, it's in here. But do you believe that this district, its policy committee members can craft a policy that would allow people who pass that FBI check to volunteer?
As long as it complies with the law, you ought to try.
Alright.
They comply the law.
Does that mean, is, do you believe, is that your opinion as well, sir?
So just one point of clarification, there is a discrepancy between the bans and who can and cannot work with children in PDE versus Child Protective Service. So, just so you're aware, that, that is my understanding.
It sounds like we are sometimes and we're not, I'm so confused about this.
We've always followed the, the language in PDE.
You just said we don't follow PDE.
PA school code law.
Have to follow the school codes. That takes precedence over PDE regulation or PDE guidance.
Correct.
What does that say?
I, I'm just saying, if it's, if it's good enough-
That says that there's a 10-year ban for any felony.
There's a 10-year, five-year, three-year ban.
That's not true, because it doesn't apply to volunteers. And it's saying specifically that in this PDE document, Act 82, that, that it says specifically, did anybody go and read it? It says that in consideration of the constitutionality of the application of Section 111 to a particular individual, PDE would expect school officials and their legal counsel to, to consider several important factors. Primarily the particular offense, and then additional factors. It, it, it lists a whole bunch. So I think that, Ron, you made an excellent suggestion. If you're able to pass an FBI fingerprint background check by the Child Protective Services law, I don't see why we-
But we wouldn't be able to hire that person.
Yes, we would, that's what I'm telling you, yes, we would.
I thought the code says you're not allowed to.
Code says you're not.
That's what I'm saying.
There's the 10-year waiting period.
You can't, we wouldn't even be able to hire, if, if they gave you all that paperwork and said, I'm the greatest person, I made a mistake nine years ago, and say, come back next year.
Okay.
Because you have to wait 10 years.
Is that correct?
It's the law, right here.
It's what the statute says. We're not hiring, talking about hiring him, but let me hear.
The court opinion on hiring said that you, it's unconstitutional to have an absolute ban. You have to go through an analysis. You go through the analysis, you don't want to hire them, fine. But that does not necessarily apply to volunteers because volunteers don't have the same status as employees, potential employees have. So.
So the in-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The institution gets the leeway to make the decision.
The institution gets greater leeway with respect to volunteers because you're not required to permit people to volunteer. You could determine nobody's volunteering, you have a right to do that.
This is why I come back to my original comment. We've circled around to the fact that we still need to put this in front of the policy committee to come up with the decision.
Well, it can't be brought in front of the policy committee unless I bring it up. So that's what I'm trying to do now. I'm not even saying we definitely have to make a decision on this, but I, I feel like it really pains me to think about parents who have, they've served their debt to society. The Department of Human Services says that, that their conviction does not prevent them, uh, you know, to be around children, and yet here we are. Because perhaps it, it is a very, I get it, it's a touchy subject. However, I still feel that we may be disenfranchising certain people, and I, I would, I would like us to consider it, for sure. I mean, if it's gonna go to the policy committee, they're, they're gonna research it and bring it back to us with a vote, then I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that.
The, the question is, do we want to apply the law to the policy?
Again, it's no law, Keith, you keep going back to that, there's no law. That's for employment, he's talking about, this is not for volunteers.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying, we're gonna, are, are we going to, because we couldn't, we, we couldn't apply it to somebody who we want to hire.
Would you want to tell a person who wrote a bad check? Let's say, uh, or if I wanted to be funny, no, I'm not gonna do that. Yeah, you know where I'm going with it, there are certain people on this board who defended that type, that type of conviction. Hold on a second, I'm saying, would you want somebody who wrote a bad check, who went to jail over that, or something silly? I'm not saying silly, it's, it's not silly, it's, it's important. But that they served their time, that they can't participate in their children's school activities? If you're a violent criminal all day, you're, no.
I, I get that, but I'm, I'm asking you this. If there is a law, which, which the Pennsylvania General Assembly has passed,
That applies to-
and we could not hire them, that same person who has paid their debts to society, they're being great people. They're awesome. I, I'm not disagreeing with that, we're not arguing that point. We wouldn't be able to hire them.
But they're not being hired, they're volunteering.
But volunteers have less rights than employees. I think that was the solicitor's point.
Correct.
That, I mean, as an employee, that's why the law has-
I would love somebody to give me an argument where they would think that somebody who wrote a bad check would not be okay to be a volunteer.
I'll get, I'll give you, I'll just, you know how we've been very concerned about ambiguity between ARs and policy, right? We've been very concerned about ambiguous wording in policies. If we're not careful, you're opening us up, up to subjective decisions about, just like he said, this person we let in, because hey, yeah, you know, will we like them more, and, or they-
So here's what I'll ask, and then we can move on, I think.
How do you get?
I would like some very, very clear understanding of how other districts are doing this. Because that is not clear to me. And I would also want some better understanding of if folks are, you know, taking this law that applies to employees and they're strictly enforcing it. Because if it, if it turns out that other districts are reviewing this more so on a case-by-case basis, if they're able to do it, why can't we?
Because we answer to our people, not their people.
Well, no, we can look at that, though, for the policy committee. Yeah, that's a fair request.
I think it's a fair request, I just think you need to apply, make sure, one, we're doing it legally, and we're able to do it. Two, that, um-
We, we enforce the law, though, here.
The other folks that, I mean, people reached out to me when they were asking these questions, specifically around this. There were, there were parent groups that reached out to me, specifically asking why we, why we even brought this to them. Um, so there were, there, there may be, you know, for this one person, and I get it, we're addressing, there may be a backlash from others that, that aren't happy about it. Um, because they don't, they don't agree with our, our philosophy. Um, and the third thing, I think you have to apply it fairly to anybody who's gonna do it so that we can stand behind the decision that somebody's making. And I don't know who that person is that would make it. Is it the board at the ultimate, at the end of the day? Or is it, is the administration?
Isn't that what it sounds like, Jeff, is the board at the end of the day, that?
No, 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 I'm saying, I'm saying the case-by-case basis. Because I don't know, I don't know who, I don't know who's doing that everywhere else, but I think however it comes, we have to figure out a way that, one, you can keep the person protected, but two, that we're able to, to fairly apply our logic on a case-by-case basis.
I respect that, and I totally understand where you're coming from. Um, I just feel also like Kalen, that unfortunately, there are individuals that are being disenfranchised from their child's education, their community schools. Um, they want to engage, uh, like you said, otherwise, really awesome, great people.
That's not true. I mean, just because they don't get to be a chaperone, they still can be there. So don't tell me they get, we're, it's not like we're keeping them out.
What's considered a chaperone, so I went and put some tattoos on-
Big deal, life, life is rough, you don't always get what you want, and you, and you made choices and decisions you made in your life.
Well, that's, that's your opinion.
You don't have to argue and change the entire world to make your life better.
Let me just make a point real quick. When I was at my son's, uh, field day, you know what I did? I put tattoos on kids' faces. That's considered a chaperone? So she wouldn't be able to put tattoos on kids' faces? That's absurd.
Well, we are, you know, blindly applying a law in a wide, you know, because it's simple, and we gotta keep it fair.
Alright, let's take it offline, no, she's saying no.
Well, it all depends on whether there's other supervision.
Yeah, there, there are events where volunteers are supervised by staff members at all times, and that's where you can help and be a visitor. If you have the care, control, and supervision of students out of the purview of an employee, then those, um, events do require clearances.
So in this case-
And you can't participate in that way.
She would not have been able to participate. Because at these field days, they have all these different stations, and here I am putting the tattoos on, nobody's supervising me. That's the kind of stuff that she's not able to do. And I think that's unfair.
Is that true? In that particular circumstance?
That's what Lisa just shook her head.
I, because I'm thinking what you're talking about is, you know, we all go down to Washington DC, I got a group of six kids and we went off on our own.
No, that's not it.
Versus, we're all at field day and I'm at different stations, there's still supervision of-
Principals make the decision based on the nature of the event. And where there's supervision by staff members and parents are helping, then they don't require clearances, okay? Then it's like a school visitor kind of thing, okay? Like you don't, um, you don't need clearances to attend your child's concert or to come in and read in the classroom, because they're either, um, it, it just depends on the type of event. But where other-
This scenario.
Where volunteers are potentially supervising or having access to children, that's where we've required, um, the clearances.
So in this situation that I gave as an example, she would not be able to participate?
The painting of the faces?
If, that, getting tattoos on kids' faces in a station.
Well, she would not, yeah, if, if that is an event where the volunteer has access to the care and control supervision of children out of the purview of employed staff, then no, she would not be able to participate in that way. But there are many ways that a school visitor can participate.
I can, I can hear, no. I mean, that, when you have these field days, you know, you, you have other employees, but they're not in direct supervision, which is what she's saying. So- Yeah, so I can, I can sort of even more simp, like, understand what you're saying. Like if you're telling someone that they're going off on their own and you're going to DC and all this kind of stuff. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about-
Serving lemonade and donuts.
Yes.
Well, I know.
Did you have to fill out a clearance form to do that?
She just said you can't, are you listening?
You could go and read, right, you can attend parties.
A field day, putting tattoos on your kid's face, you wouldn't be able to do.
Did you have to fill out a clearance form to do that, though?
Well, I did all my clearances, so of course.
Here's the deal, I, I think we need to take this offline.
Yeah, I do, too.
And, and we may also have to agree, we're not gonna, not gonna agree on this totally 100%. Because I, I think you do have to be very cautious when you open up Pandora's box as to what you're going to open it up for.
So then let's see what other districts are doing.
Saying that we have to be cautious, these are kids that we're talking about. And while I get that there is one person-
You know how many people who don't have a record that I do not want in front of my kids?
You know what, and I agree with you.
Listen.
And I, and I-
I don't get to say that whether or not they get to be volunteers.
Bottom line is, you know, they have, they, they don't have a criminal record. And so you're, you're 100% right, I know there's people out there that I wouldn't want in front of my kids either. Um, but, but we have to make sure, whatever we're doing, that we're following the law to the best.
We make the law here.
Huh?
Let's just, well, that, no, there is no law for volunteers, is what I'm trying to say. But anyway, we keep going in circles, so let's figure out what other districts do, and then we can-
It's a policy, not a law, for clarity.
Well, he keeps saying law, I'm trying to say there is no law for volunteers.
It's not, but I, I will tell you that-
There's only law for-
I think that's the only, the only thing we have to go by, is if there's, there's a law around it, that we have to use that as sort of a foundation.
And there's guidance by the PDE with those laws and what you're supposed to do for volunteers. And we're not following it.
Okay. And that may be the case, and we can, we can absolutely look at that. But what I'm saying is, I think we have to have that as a foundation for our, our argument.
It's got a lot of context, but yes. Okay.
Hey, I think we've spent enough time on this, we'll look at the other districts.
Policies got some fun stuff to do.
Yeah, I know, but we need to move on.
Um, we are at this juncture now gonna open up for final public comment?
Nope, nope, nope.
Skip some new business.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Volunteer pa- oh, the PSBA. I'm Russian. PSBA yearly membership discussion. Kalen.
Did he call me Caitlin? Uh, yeah, so I'll talk about this, this is actually, should be pretty quick. Um, so when I started to go online to take some PSBA courses, uh, there's only some that are, there's some that are very limited to us because we don't have this certain kind of membership. So when I started to ask, hey, how do we get access to all these great courses? That are, by the way, online courses, so you wouldn't have to take a time off work and all this kind of stuff. I found out that we are paying right now, um, it's, we're paying for the, our membership dues, and please, anyone, feel free to correct me. Um, we're paying $13,854 per year, whereas this all-access membership would be a total of $15,000. So it's a very minimal price, um, increase. And if you look at that other document, you also get some discounts, so all the different, so, so for instance, I'm going to this legal roundup thing here soon. Um, I would get a discount on that if I was an all-access member. Any, any sort of conference or anything you want to attend, then you would get a discount. And then you can see there, you get live training, um, excludes customized online learning, policy maintenance, which is something that we've been saying we want to do. Normally, stuff that you would have to pay individually, you get, it's inclusive of this. So do I have to most-
It's $15,000 total.
Well, we're already paying almost 14.
Yeah, I know.
No, it's a $2,500 upgrade, that's all.
It's less than that.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like a 1,200 bucks.
But basically, all, there are these big things in here, the online learning is like essentially live, live training.
All-access standard, see, 13.8. It's what we pay now. This is 15. That's right. Because we're paying already 1,250 for the policy maintenance, and that's included in the all-access. So the net difference is about 1,100 bucks per year to get all those other nice add-ons.
Just speaking as the PSBA liaison for a second, the reason we never did this is because, and Dr. Hunter can attest to this, nobody ever did anything involving PSBA before.
That was the old board.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Just saying.
That's, there, there were a couple times, but-
We care to learn in this place today.
I'm all in favor of the Pennsylvania State Bowling Association.
Maybe if we would've had this a long time ago, we would've known the difference between policy and AR. That's all I'm saying.
Twinkle.
When's the, uh, when's the, the year for the PSBA dues?
Um, I spoke with PSBA representative today, uh, earlier today. It, 7-1 is when we renew it. I asked if there was a potential to prorate the current program, and they said they will not do that because they have too many school districts who previously jumped in and out of the program during the year. So they hold strict to the cutoff, but then effective 7-1, if the board so decided the bill comes out in the next, the end of March, they mentioned, so depending on what the board chooses to do.
So should we wait to vote on it, then?
Vote on it now.
Vote on it now.
It doesn't really need to be a vote.
I'll make a motion to vote unanimous.
I didn't know it was gonna be till July, that's sad. But, but anyway.
What do you want?
You, you apparently make the laws around here, don't you, Keith? I see how you roll, I'm just messing with you.
I would motion to approve this, uh, yearly membership consent, or might you have my vote? If, if we all concede, does anybody any, have any objection to, uh, this institution, uh, upgrading our membership to PSBA? Excellent, I second.
Do we have to vote, or no?
Nope.
It will end up being, when the bill comes in, it would be, since it's not a contract per se, it would be part of the bills list, and you approve the bills list.
I know y'all gonna kill me, sorry. I have another one. Um, so since we are not meeting again until next, um, like a month from now, and since we have a lot of work to do on the policies, I was wondering, and I don't know how to do this the right way, but the right way, but if I was gonna suggest that we have a policy, specific work session for policy, uh, mid-March...
Talk to the policy chair, she can always schedule policy committee meetings.
So that we can... Okay. Do we have to do anything special, then? Just...
No, she can schedule it. She's the chair.
We'll talk and pick a date.
You have to give notice, don't you, so the community has access?
So we'll have to figure out when it works best for everyone, and then, okay, awesome.
Isn't the community open to invite the subcommittee meetings? Doesn't it have to be announced ahead of time?
Well, you have to advertise committees in case more than four people show up. So you should advertise it, publicly welcome to attend.
One great idea that we got from this last meeting was to include teachers, students, it's like, community members. Just something to think about. Might be kind of neat, as we're going through this, to get some additional stakeholders. What do you guys think?
I think that's a good idea, but it's not gonna happen in mid-March.
That's okay. No, 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 that's okay. We can just think about that for the future.
And I think if you advertised the topics, maybe, so that people could self-select.
Where they want to participate?
Yeah.
Yeah.